It has not changed. It has changed in the sense that you have the corrections that we discussed, or the changes that were discussed at the last workshop. But the expected expenses is reflected in your worksheets. And I think where we're at right now doesn't necessarily have anything to do with what those line item details are on the expenses, other than the update to where we're at with the fund balance. And I've explained already that our current finance department is still updating and doing reconciliations. Have you guys finished May yet? They have finished May, but they have not finished June. And that was explained at our first workshop, that those numbers were very preliminary because reconciliations and update to the accounting software had not been done since March.
I get all that, Jessica. What in this package that we have is the latest information?
The proposed expenses for next year. The actuals from the two prior years and the proposed expenses for next year is where we left off. Again, line item by line item on this year's expenses were not updated.
I understand that. Now frankly, I didn't look at line item by line item this year expenses. So if your spreadsheet, so is page two of this, of the package, is invalid or not?
Page two on the proposed numbers is valid.
Okay, that's valid, okay. How about page number three?
The proposed expenses is valid.
Okay, and what about the proposed revenue?
The proposed revenue is, is correct.
So the, on the general fund, the difference of 271,083 is correct?
Yes.
And then I guess we gnaw everything else from there.
So again, the proposed line item on each of the pages, on, so for example, on page four, the proposed budget items, those, those are all updated.
So the proposed lines which add up to the proposed budget are correct?
Yes.
Okay, but the expenses for the current year budget are not correct?
The 2018-19 projected end of year numbers are not.
Okay, and you have given us some estimation, okay, which we don't have. It's not in our package, right?
It's on this sheet.
Well, that's the fund balance, and you, we have no backup data to be able to go do our own assessment because we started this meeting four weeks ago with a whole bunch of spreadsheet errors, not the least of which was a $1.2 million typo and $72,000 errors for travel. And so my confidence level in adding this stuff up frankly is pretty low. And yet you expect us to say, well, that's kind of where it's at, so leave one spreadsheet. That's why I did my own independent spreadsheet to what could say. What was the budget, what was projected, what was the over, what was the under, what was the percentage? I had it all add up, and then what comes as out, projected budget. Here's what that was supposed to be based upon what you gave us, not more than five days ago. And now we have new numbers. It seems kind of poor to try and get a city council to say, would you please approve a budget that is right now at a deficit level. I have very real concerns about whether or not we're going to be able to fund a capital plan that right now doesn't even have the same level of money for streets, even though at a $522,000 overrun this year, I would expect you see that roll straight over the next year. It did not, and we've got increased headcount in people, so I, I was going to.
That's just a worksheet that I use to calculate the, the fund balances that are on your, on this spreadsheet.
It'd be nice to get a copy of that.
It's just my worksheet, it's not that. If you want, I can give you copies of the reports that Abel provided me last week. They give you those numbers. And he can make some copies right now. Anybody else want copies of those numbers? Because they'll tie directly to that with the projected formulas.
My, you almost dropped it, Rose. Testee, can you hear me? From what I understand, we had our first review on July 16th. It was the first set up of budget, of the complete budget as, as it was at that point. And we, we basically went through it, made our recommendations for changes, and then those changes were noted, were left into, into the budget forms. And then we have our first workshop on July 23rd, which is based on those changes that were made to the first review of budget forms. We found some more items and issues that needed to be corrected. We made those corrections, decided in the second workshop on July 30th. And so we then reviewed all the changes and corrections made to the one on first workshop. Then we had the third workshop, which is basic, which was based on the information that we basically agreed on, on the second workshop. And that is what we have before us today to for a final review before the adoption of the budget. I'm not exactly sure where, where you're coming from. It seems to me like all we need to do now is just look at this third workshop budget and try to finalize it.
Right.
So one of my challenges is, we do not have the latest information in here in terms of expenditures. And the reason that is critically important is we now have to allocate resources out of our fund balance. So it would have been nice, and that's why I asked for the spreadsheet. I went through and did a detailed analysis of looking inside, getting the fund balance. Where would I think we'd want to spend money in three key areas? One is to meet our reserve requirements, which we as council agreed have to have, a 25% reserve established four years from now. The second is, we have a deficit on our budget. Okay, we don't have enough money in revenue or expenses based upon all the details we went through to validate the budget. We have to allocate money there. On top of that, there's a number of capital requires, requirements that we received in a document, which, as I said, over five years, by August use this next year, totaled $1 million. Okay? If we're going to go so far away through that, it would be nice to have a good accurate reflection of what the fund balance is so that we can go forward. We didn't get that on Friday. And so all we had was the data to look at. I do my own independent analysis, just because that's what I'm used to doing. I've been through these budgets so many times. We find issues and having found errors before, we've corrected a lot of them. I'm just wanting to make sure we're looking at the same pieces of information, facts and data, so we as council can make an informed decision. I cannot in good conscience make a decision on recommendations without understanding what's the basis for the numbers.
I agree, I agree with you. But the reality is that budgets, any budget is a guess, sir. It's based, basically on information that we acquired from expenditures in previous years and revenues. And then we incorporate it into a business format that we can work from. And in reality, we will not be able to ascertain where we are as far as revenue and spending until the first or second quarters as we go into the new year.
I'm happy to agree with you. So for example, roads, one of the questions I want to ask when we get into the streets discussion and allocating revenue and the capital plan, the city manager has recommended we allocate $350,000 for our roads this next year. I'm happy to ask that question now, but the question will be, how many city blocks will that take care of? Based upon the discussion that we have with KSA, the expert, if we're going to completely redo that, that would be nine city blocks. There are only 900 city blocks in the city development, excluding out county, state, states. Since we have an overrun of $522,000, which divided by 40 would have gotten us 12 blocks, but we need to get that done, still zero. Then the question is, how much money should we allocate to streets versus what the city manager has recommended we allocate to sewers, which is an additional $350,000 on top of what we already have allocated in that area? So we have a fair amount of work to go through. So I agree, the details, nickel dimes, $10,000, $20,000, I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about the big ticket items, and how much do we have in our fund balance to make an allocation so we can make an informed decision in three areas?
If your issue is big, three ticket items, let's look at those.
I want to get to the fund balance first to understand the basis for it. That's why I'm asking the questions about what is our fund balance? That's where I started. We start with fund balance. I'm not looking at any of the grimy details in here, we already talked about that. I'm just trying to understand the basis for fund balance. That's where I'm starting from. Once we do that, then we can probably go through, and I think it's incumbent on us as the stewards of the taxpayers' money, that we need to be able to respond to questions about that as opposed to say, well, we just looked at it, we blessed it, and that was it. I don't think that's what our role responsibility is. So that's why I'm asking details about fund balance.
So even though we're showing that there's $5,566,679 in unrestricted fund balance being projected after we do the reserve transfers? I, I would not, as a city manager, recommend expending or allocating all of those funds. The projected end of your fund balance will always come back and be adjusted by the auditor. And you won't know what that actual final is until you get your final audit report, which would be January, February. So being a projection truly is an estimate based on the current trend of numbers that we have. And in this case with the general fund, showing an unrestricted remaining fund balance of 980,000, I think would not be wise to turn around and say, well, we're going to allocate all 980,000. You'd want to at least continue to leave an unrestricted balance in your financials of at least half of that.
You're not going to get into this, Rose, I mean, I'm just going to understand what the numbers are so we can make an informed decision. So go back to your chart, end of year fund balance. That is on page 47 of the chart you gave us. Correct?
Yes.
So... Again, based upon the audit, you're saying it's 923,000 from the general fund was left over from the last audit. And the hot funding was 839,350, is that correct?
Yes.
And that comes from which page of the audit?
Just covered that.
Well, I'm a little slow, okay, so point me back.
We'll wait, we'll wait.
So I find it on page 27.
It's on page 32. Oops, sorry, that's the water.
Well, you can't be on page 32, Jessica.
That's water in 37. Sorry.
So you can be flippant about me being slow, but fit the right page.
Page 24.
Page 24. Okay, and I got it, and that matches the page 27, okay? And you want to cover the enterprise fund now, or wait to go through the general fund hot funds first, or come back and cover the enterprise, we'll call it my call?
It's entirely up to you.
I'm happy to go through your order. Okay, so that's the, that is page 20 or 32. And the airport has an unrestricted fund balance of 76,075. And the gas department, 766068. So in theory, the airport has a $76,000 sitter that could be used. Okay? So now take us through, again, since we don't have access to the data that you have, just through what the current fund balances are now for the end of this year. Are these numbers square, the 57822?
We're, we're double checking the numbers on the airport because that end of year fund balance is of 930. You'll notice the end of, projected end of year fund balance is actually a negative for the airport because that many was used to cover the match on this airport, the airport project.
So we reallocated money out of other budgets to accommodate that. That's why I'm asking why it was allocated. We agreed to do a budget transfer to cover that. That's why I'm asking why we took it out of the airport fund balance. Even though as an airport asset, we have the ability to allocate reserves or other fund balances to be able to cover that.
Right, and so in order to cover the whole match, we took the airport reserves, funding from, from the gas department fund balance, as well as general fund, to cover that difference. So there was from three different sources to cover the match for the airport.
So, uh, so that says regardless of where the money comes from, from a reallocation standpoint, the airport will always have a negative fund balance unless it at some point brings in more cash than its expenses are.
Correct.
That's why, that's why we do a reallocation. We put money into that capital asset, no different than we put money into the capital assets of the streets, which comes out of other areas at times that may or may not meet our needs. So I don't understand the accounting for that. That resolution said we take it out of reserves.
Okay, was there a question? Sorry.
Yeah, I raised a question, but you're not going to solve it now. When we pass the resolution, because I drafted the resolution, was to come out of reserves and not be allocated, was come out of the gas fund or the others as you described. And I'm not, we're not going to spend the time to walk through the details of what that resolution said. But I'm surprised that $84,931,000 got allocated directly against the airport, creating a negative when the overrun, under run budget is, or under run, $41,000. That says we allocated $120,000, which says it all got charged to the airport, even though it came out of reserves. So my question is, from an accounting standpoint, when we pull money out of an enterprise fund and allocate it to another enterprise fund, is it our standard accounting policy that we automatically charge the recipient of that regardless of whether it's considered coming out of reserve or not? And if that's the policy, I'd like to see and understand it.
Abel doesn't want to answer that question. In theory, the, there should be a due to from made from the airport to the other fund that is providing the additional resources for it. Those due to funds have not been cleared, and Abel has a list of 89 audit adjustments that still have not been made.
Okay, so final line is, we don't know which of the general, hot, or enterprise funds are accurate from an end of year fund balance. That's what I'm hearing. So given that's a rat, that's all the reason for me to look and say, don't know what it is, we might as well proceed on what we got because there's, we don't have accurate data, and what you got in the papers is as close as it's going to get, I guess.
At this point, I, I would have to say yes. Until the finance department catches up on reconciliations and entering all of the audit adjustments and clearing out all the due to frums, which is generally why I say you wouldn't want to allocate all of your fund balance anyways, because the auditor will come in and make additional adjustments and entries to that final fund balance.
So this goes back to the question why asked earlier in the year. And we take care of all the things associated with the audit. Your response was, we've not received anything from the auditor. But my perspective was, we had a lot of work to do to get caught up with all those adjustments, which clearly have not yet been made.
Clearly.
So the answer is, yeah, we have a lot of stuff to go do, we have to vet it. And is there a forecast about when those will be completed?
Uh, no, I know that the staff is working hard, and some of them have been coming in on weekends to try to catch up on as much as they can.
I understand. Do we have a sense of the total dollar volume we're talking about for these 89 adjustments? Is that $10,000, $20,000, hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars?
Well, and that's just the audit adjustments. You're talking about additional due to frums that haven't been moved also as far as franchise fees and administrative fees, but there's not a total dollar amount on the audit adjustments? Oh yeah, there is. I apologize. Well, they give you a total. $5,340,754 in audit adjustments.
So $5 million in audit adjustments, and our total city budget is roughly 13 million. And so it's, I find it difficult to believe that we can walk through an end of year fund balance with over $5 million of adjustments yet to be made. So we really don't know what our projected expenses are over and under run. I get the auditors, auditors who come check our work, that's what they pay them for. But to have a five out of 13, 30% of our budget has adjustment to be made, I don't see how we get to a lot of it.
Well, the option that council has is they can always just adopt last year's budget and move forward with those expenditures. And then as soon as everything is caught up and the auditor has provided us with the preliminary fund balance, or not fund balance, but a preliminary CAFR, then council can look at making an amendment to that budget at the time.
Yeah, I don't think we need the auditors to come in and make adjustments there. This is last year.
No, they'll come in and do more adjustments this year. They do them every year.
Of course they do. But normally we follow our procedures, so to get caught up on the $5.5 million, what would be a reasonable amount of time to get that accomplished?
Well, we'd have to have them done by September 30th. Because not having them done by September 30th would then push back our, closing out of our end of the year. And that would push back our audit. And last year, we were already two weeks behind in completing the audit. So that would just push that back into probably an April or early May timeframe if we don't have all of them done by the end of September.
So is that a commitment, or that's a guess, or that's a one? Or is that to think, what's the date we expect to have that done?
September 30th.
Okay, so if we have a forecast for September 30th, and we're working to balance out to get the two stumps of $5.5 million. And there's no question in my mind, it will have a significant impact on the end of year fund balance totals, because right now, we're just guessing. Uh, my recommendation, council, is we have to stop the budget process, go into the, uh, August 26th, or August 20th meeting, which is our next regular council meeting aimed at adopting the budget. And that our approach ought to be, we just proceed on with the budget that we have this year, use it exactly the same. That will allow us to give to public carry our proposed budget, because we're comfortable with it. We know what it is. We move forward with the tax deduction rate, which we know what that is. We move forward with public carings. We adopt it not later than the 29th of September. By the end of September, we'll have the balance adjustments made across the board. And then we can start sitting down and looking, saying, okay, now what adjustments do we want to go with? And that would be, that's the only lie I think I'd need to get there from here, because $5.5 million out of 13 million in my mind is pretty good.
So the adjustments that have to be made are not really impactful to your proposed next year budget? Because they apply to numbers from last year?
Okay, so the question we're raising.
So whatever, whatever you're showing as your 930 end of year fund balance is what the auditor has put in there for these adjustments that haven't been made. So those numbers apply to everything prior to 93018. The due to frums this year are reflected in some form or fashion within these numbers, because you're either not going to show them, or you're going to show them still sitting in another fund, because they just haven't been moved. So again, you can go back and you can just adopt last year's budget. And that's what I will file with the secretary on the 9th, because according to your charter, it has to be done. I think the 9th was the latest, correct, Testee? The 9th was the latest. And you do that just using the same exact numbers as you had last year?
Yeah, well, I said, I can't in good conscience go with what we've got with this much differential in work. And I appreciate the backlog and everything getting worked. I just don't know how, because if we dive into the capital plan, you know, which I think we have significant discussions to go through, the capital plan you proposed, which was interesting, all your definitions look like they came out of San Angelo, because that's what the document says.
Yeah, they did.
Well, you know, it'd be nice if you kind of checked that ahead of time, because we're trying to figure out what's going on. And then when I look at the numbers, now the numbers are proposing over the next five years, $23.4 million of potential debt, some of which, your current proposed budget is proposing $350,000 of debt this next year, which I cannot support until we really understand what the game plan is in our priorities. So I, I, unless the rest of the council wants to go ahead and bless another $350,000 worth of debt going into this budget this next year, which I cannot in good conscience.
Are you talking about the debt funded year run on the, one, two, three, fourth table down? That, that's already your debt? Oh no, it's not, I apologize. That would be added debt, you're right. I'm apologizing.
It's added debt, Jessica. Read your own stuff.
You're absolutely right.
Okay? And it adds on another $23 million on top of that in the out years. And there is no definitive strategy for roads. The deal that you copied from San Angelo certainly talks about a waste of water in sewer, you know, but it doesn't dive into the details associated with what we're going to do for roads. for roads, and until we get some impact and understanding, which I hope we do tonight in the full meeting, about what the road gaming plan is, there's no way I can look and say, twenty-three thousand dollars would be enough money to go do that on top of your current roads budget. So that's why I say, let's get it right. We know this last year's budget is one that seemed to work. We're obviously saying, move forward with that, and city management sends it to the city secretary, and we have a plan for next year, until we get things settled out, we have a lot of work to do. Does the rest of the council have a...
So, i-if we follow that strategy and just adopt last year's budget, then what I would do is recommend that you do a full-scale capital improvement plan, complete with public hearings and public input, that you set up a, some kind of commission or committee to go through these and prioritize these based on the public need, and not just what was already sitting on a spreadsheet that had been submitted. I think it's important when you're doing a capital improvement plan, that you do involve the public and you engage them in that process in setting the priorities and defining them in the future, because even though this is presented as a capital improvement plan, it isn't representative of a true plan. A true plan engages the public, holds public hearings, and gets public input on what their priorities are, as well as what they as taxpayers see as their, as their priorities, and what they as taxpayers are willing to incur as long-term debt for the city in order to achieve their vision for the city. Not just based on, you know, department heads putting numbers down and estimates coming out of what's, what's required of the improvement plan. It also would define definitively how much of each of those expenses would come out of grant funds as opposed to a debt fund, based on another plan or strategy. So, because we don't have those plans or strategies, we don't have a comprehensive master plan, we've had requests for extensions of water lines and sewer lines, all those things need to be inputted in order for this to be a true capital improvement plan. This technically is the reformulated spreadsheet that I inherited in the shape of a plan. That's, that's all this is, and I think that it, it's important that if we go forward and we look at this and creating a true five-year capital plan, that, that it is something that has been vetted through the public with, with their feedback and opinion.
So I would violently agree in having them the longest-serving member on council. We did go through those details before, and I would tell you that even though you said all you inherited was a spreadsheet, there was a lot more to the capital plan than Eric had in place. I would also tell you that that's the reason, in the wisdom of our forefathers who put the charter together, and those who put the charter, said ninety days before a budget's settled, you're supposed to have a draft capital plan in council. And I know all the reasons and excuses about why that didn't occur, but that's why we're supposed to get it back in May, not now.
I agree. I think that should be priority as we go into the new fiscal year, and setting up and engaging that committee to do this capital plan so that it can be done and vetted appropriately.
I'm not sure we need a committee yet, we need a baseline, and this one right now, I can't even think to support, because it would add thirty-six, or thirty cents per hundred-dollar value, this draft plan you put together, which will raise our tax rate from fifty-eight cents per hundred-dollar value to eighty-eight cents per hundred-dollar value, and I don't think there'd be anyone here at this table who would be re-elected if we put that plan together, but that's the plan you gave us.
I support the, I support the idea, I'm not sure whether it's a committee or commission, whatever you want to call it, but I think we definitely need public input to derive a comprehensive finance plan for the city. How is to be done? I have no idea, but I think that's something we need to look at seriously. The only route is, go back to the, the format that we have now, and in the areas where we have differences from what we proposed in eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen-twenty, like for example, the general fund, we have a difference of two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand in eighty-seven, and if there's nothing else, let's both go, let's go back to the line items and let's zero it out.
I'm happy to sit here, I can just tell you my position is, I will not vote for the budget as being presented right now, including we went through line by line by line, which you've already done three times. Majority of council would support it, that's fine, I'm happy to be in the minority, but I'm just giving my opinion. There's young ladies in the audience who might like to be able to say we can go forward with parks, but I'm not going to do that unless I understand the total impact. Can we hear the rest of the discussion, since this is a council meeting, not a private dialogue? Use the mic.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we get together in council so we can meet, because we're not supposed to meet separately, so how about we all have a discussion?
I'm sorry, we're not having a discussion, I own purpose, but basically, then I was trying to explain to the mayor my, my viewpoint regarding what I just said previously. We have two choices, one, if we go ahead to the, into the, into the budget and zero out the, the differences throughout the whole thing, which will mean drastic cuts everywhere, or the other thing, and I think is appropriate, the more appropriate way to go is, let us set aside a, again, a commission or committee, and invite people from the public, and, and see what we can come up with for the best interest of this community.
So, the only areas... You're want, no, it's not. You're wanting to go through...
I think you like it, which...
So, Mr. Levis, you're wanting to go through the proposed budget and see where else we can cut to try to come up with the two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand? Is that what, what I'm understanding?
That is one option.
Okay. Well, because the only two that, that didn't balance or are showing a deficit that we were going to work on is the general fund and water and wastewater. So again, if we go back and just return to the numbers from last year, the other ones could stay the same, so gas, hotel fund, airport, those numbers, we could move forward with the proposed ones, because those balance. The general fund is one that we could go through and say, okay, where else can we cut? And then, and the wa, the water and wastewater, and it would be a matter of looking at kind of what we've traditionally or historically spent in the years past. The only department that had an increase in personnel was the Parks Department, so if we go back to the last year's budget, they would lose the proposed personnel that they were asking for that. All the other departments remain at the same funding, the same personnel or staffing levels, including the water and wastewater, so we would, could go through that and say, well, we'll return these numbers back to the numbers from last year to see if that makes up the difference that we're currently short. And that way, you're actually approving a new budget, but you're not going to be bringing in any fund balance until after the new fiscal year, and we have time to catch up on all of the backlog paperwork in the finance department.
I will submit that one of the challenges we also have that we've not even gotten to, and one of the reasons I'm recommending we use last year's budget, is we have goals and objectives associated with the amount of money we're going to spend and what we expect to go achieve. At least last year's budget does in fact have a whole series of goals and objectives that we expect to achieve, and I keep going back to simple performance measures, you know, about what we're looking for. My view relative to roads having been down this path now, the last two budgets, I am not prepared to allow to go forward without a delineation about what the roads are really going to accomplish, and talk about, talking with citizens. The number one complaint I get is sewer line breakage, water line breakage, and roads, which most people say have gone down dramatically. So, in, in my mind, at least this has a statement of mission for each department, what their objectives are, what their goals and objectives should be, we just line out two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and call out two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we get the ball rolling.
So, so as far as their goals and objectives, that's, that was, that's not part of the budget workshop process? The final budget...
I hear you, I hear you, I am not going to approve a budget. I will vote against a budget unless there's some definitive goals and objectives. Whether you consider it or not, I raised it at our very first meeting, and you have continued to make that statement, which is fine, but thus far, without goals and objectives, I'm going to say, no, and whatever budget you bring forward.
For the sake of the rest of the council, it's difficult for the department heads to define their goals and objectives until they know pretty much what that final budget's going to look like. So, it's hard for them to say, oh, we're going to accomplish this, or we're going to accomplish that, if they don't get additional staffing. We're not going to be able to increase services if they know they're not going to get additional staffing. So, so that final budget that Mr. Stevens is referring to with the goals and objectives, those goals and objectives were not presented to council until the first council meeting for budget adaption. So, those will be filed and then presented to council along with the budget as approved by council. Council's role in setting the budget determines the level of services and expectations at the department level, and once they know they're going to get their Kubota, or they're going to get their extra truck, and they're going to get their extra personnel, it's difficult for them to set those goals and objectives until they know that. So, once, at, going back to last year, once we went through all the workshops and we had most of the budget details ironed out, that's when their goals and objectives came back and said, okay, this is what they felt was going to be realistic with what they were being provided by council.
If we, and, this, this one that you've given us this year, end of this budget, is that, that means we have to, that we're agreeing to this, this CIP thing that you gave us?
No.
Okay.
Obviously, your general fund budget is not going to sustain all of those projects. That's what was on the spreadsheet, some of them have been incorporated, for example, the seventy thousand for the software has been incorporated into the general fund budget, so as far as the difference goes, if council doesn't want to move forward with the software, then that's, now we're down to two-hundred-and-one thousand. If council doesn't want to go through and add the extra personnel for the Parks Department, we can back that number out, that's going to give you another hundred thousand. So, you could technically, in theory, balance this budget by going back to those main line items that have already been reviewed and are in this budget. And then after the new year, and after we get caught up on entries and clearing out due-to-frums and transferring funds, you'll have a better idea with the trial balance, which is usually done by the end of October, to come back and say, okay, now we kind of have a better idea of what our fund balance is going to be, and what capital projects do we want to put back in and incorporate into this budget. And that amendment, the cities can do amendments on a regular basis, of course, it's not recommended, but I've seen cities do them almost on a monthly basis, as expenses change, because this is just a projection based on whatever data is available at the time this is being prepared. So, we can do that, go through those line items in the general fund, try to reduce that two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, and you would not be rolling over any fund balance at all, and then once that's done, amend the budget to start looking at, okay, now what capital improvement projects can we incorporate? From there, of course, then the departments will have to go back and set their goals and objectives to, based on whatever's finally done. Like, our goal and objective administratively and the finance would have been to implement new software, but if it gets cut out, then of course, it's not going to be to implement new software, it's going to be to maybe RFP a software, and then present to council an option to approve the software to come in, and then the allocation will have to be made from fund balance at that time. The same thing with the roads. At this point, we don't know what the roads are, I'm going to give you an update on the streets later, they'll be here at the next meeting to present their final plan, along with, I've got a draft of the five-year plan, and they can go through that more detailed at that meeting, and then if council wants to say, okay, we're going to move four-hundred thousand into, from fund balance into streets to cover that, then you can. I mean, a budget can be as fluid as you want it to be, generally, you want it to try to be as accurate as it can be, but at this point, with the current circumstances, this is the best data to our knowledge that we're able to present to you at this time. So those are your options. You can just amend last year's budget, you're going to have to come back and make an amendment anyways, or we go through it, try to balance it, without rolling in any fund balance, knowing we're going to have to come in and do an amendment to incorporate any capital improvement projects later on. Also buys you time, also, to start that process on a full capital improvement plan that can be done with public input. And then we've got the master park plan, and so even the numbers in here for parks is just based on the idea, like, I guess, what was presented during the wish list, we don't really have an idea of what the future master park plan expectations are going to be until that gets adopted, and we come up with an implementation schedule for the results of that master park plan.
So if I look at our city and outline budget policy, page five, appropriation policies, it says appropriation shall be sufficient to provide quality services at a reasonable cost to women and available financial resources. All new or present program funding should be accompanied with concise statements of program's missions, objectives, and intended measurable outcomes. The budget ordinance shall specify the authority department directors have in respect to changing their personnel budgets. In developing regulations for operational reductions, departments should ensure that administrative and non-service areas have been reduced to maximum possible, and general anti-service reductions may be necessary, should also include reductions in administrative functions, such as management, supervisory, payroll, and staff. Now, my reason for walking through that is, if we approve the budget as presented, there will be an appropriation process that just says, hand out the dollars, here we go. And yet our policy requires that we do much more than that, which is why my view is, given where we're at right now, of setting aside whatever circumstances doubt us here, take the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget, change the name on it, in terms of the title for the year, and go out accordingly. I'm not pleased with the implications that it has to departments, but at least we know what the goals and objectives are, because given our current rate of getting things done in this city, we won't see what the goals and objectives are for quite some time, until we get a new finance director, until we get new people to lead what we've been telling us, to lead the public works, to be able to be the chief of police... to, to lead the public works, to be able to be the chief of police, and all of those. So my view is, we're best there at least, we council will know what the expectations are for the city departments to achieve what they're doing. We want to take a strong indication about where we're at, and we want to keep the dialogue ongoing, and keep on swiping through what we got.
I just want to clarify, in my mind, the budget process, uh, process with the city, my paraphrase is, once we get into the cycle, each of the divisions are asked to come up with a list of goals, objectives, expectations, of what they hope to accomplish in the next fiscal year, and then with that, of course, a corresponding budget. Each of the divisions does that by working with their respective employees. Then that, their submission goes to the general manager, the general manager compiles, based upon a set of standards and those expectations that are also, uh, recommended, and then that is, then submitted to us for our review and recommendation, and hopefully approval. But we find that this year, we have a deficit, $271,000, and what we're saying is, we need to get that reduced. Now, we could probably go into the budget, into the general fund budget, and say, yes, the administration, you have a deficit of $15,000. We could go in there and look at where we can reduce that down, as well as through the other line items, or management, non-departmental departments. We can reduce the amount of money that different program. Let's say that the revenues that come in prove to be as predicted or better, can we not then amend the budget to increase the amount of-
Yes.
-spending to go to the different departments, depending upon those objectives and expectations?
Yes. You're not, you're, so, you're not in any way limited to just this information, and once you pass it, that's it, you've got to live with it for the next 12 months? And that's why I said that in, in some cities, their budgets are very fluid, and they do amendments probably on a month-to-month basis. That, that's just not, you know, I mean, it's not recommended, because that's a lot of tracking when it comes to audit, as far as when amendments are done. And in, in reality, during this past year, you've made budget amendments without actually adopting a full amendment ordinance, and that may be some of those due-to forms that are sitting there, because documentation hasn't been complete on it. That's, that's a whole other issue. But your option right now is not to just scrap the last three weeks of work you've done, your full budget submission isn't due until the next council meeting. That, and, and going back to last year, we did the same thing. We went through a series of workshops, narrowed it down to some specific numbers, and then you were presented with the final that included the goals and objectives and the narratives of, of each of the departments. And you'll actually be able to see from there, where we hit the marks and where we didn't, and who actually accomplished what they had set out to and who didn't, and hopefully, this year, they'll also include, you know, some challenges as they're carrying over some of those goals that they weren't able to accomplish this year. It might have been they weren't able to get a full staff until April. It could be that they had a large amount of turnover during a certain amount of year and weren't able to accomplish something. It could be that the price of the project exceeded what they had estimated, and so they didn't move forward. There's, there's a whole lot of different ways that that can be addressed when you get the final, but to have to come to you now and say, these are our goals and objectives because we want this, is not necessarily how it goes. Council determines the level of funding for the departments, to the certain degree, of course, there is the wish list that they'd like to have, and then that, that goes back to creating those goals and objectives. So like the Parks Advisory Board Commission Committee, if they, if they, if council at this point recommends funding that additional person, then they would set out to delineate what the additional programs and services that person would be able to provide to the city. If we go back and say, okay, so the Parks guys are, you know, are going to get an extra person, the streets guys are going to get an extra person, this is what this is going to do in the next year. But to be able to tell, hey, give me the goals and objectives based on your wish list, and then it all gets mixed because we don't have enough money, then they have to go back and amend their goals and objectives anyways. And so that's part of that final part, that final presentation, that would have been done at the next council meeting, along with the first hearing of that. And even though it's presented in that final format, does not mean that changes cannot be made at that time, before its final adoption. You've got two public hearings. Somebody from the public may walk in and say, hey, what happened to this? And then council says, oh yeah, that's something important, we had agreed to fund this year, we need to rework this here in this meeting before we adopt this final budget. So it's, it's fluid, yes, it's a plan, it's an estimate based on income and revenues for the next year, and based on income and revenues from the three years prior, but it's fluid.
In the concept of time, um, like, when do you think that we know that the revenues that we projected will be coming in, and are stronger than the expenses, money to roll out? Is that within the first quarter or the second quarter?
I would say, it would be-
If you look at the-
It would probably first quarter of next year.
I would disagree. We know, because we've been looking at budget reports for the last year, about our revenue, and we didn't find out we're going to have an under running project of revenue until you just provided that data to us, and we've been looking at it this month. I find it hard to believe we'll be able to project in the first quarter about where we're going to be. As the city manager said, that's just getting started, we're getting going. So, I mean, the realities of budgets is you take your best shot at it, you work your way through, you come up with your numbers, you get close, then you begin to say, hey, you got to cut back because you're not ready to overrun, or you got more money that you haven't spent, you work your way through, you work out the balance of the budget. That's why I'm so focused on, what's our fund balance at the end of the year? So we council understand how much money's available to roll over to next year. This is it. You brought in the city manager, including the capital budget or recommendation to go and spend an initial $350,000 in debt. Okay, that's what, that's what the current plan shows, in terms of going off and spending that. I'm having a hard time with understanding what that looks like, and we don't know what our plan is for the broader elements of water and wastewater.
I'm sorry, I understood that you were asking about revenues for this year. Yeah, so you'll, you'll know where our mark is for this year, usually by the first quarter of next fiscal year. You won't know where next fiscal year's at until the following quarter over there.
Yep.
So, yeah.
The experience of this last year, we were basically in the red every month.
Yes, we were.
We were in red.
And we're still forecast to be in the red. Right now, your revenue's less than you forecast.
Yeah. So, so remember that last year, we budgeted to transfer from fund balance $291,000, that transfer hasn't been made yet either. So that transfer's still sitting technically in last year's revenue, it hasn't not been allocated to this fiscal year yet. That's just another one of those due-to forms that hasn't been done yet.
I mean, we have done pretty good-
I can't hear you. Do you have a mic?
That means that we've altered the budget.
Well, at this, at this point, if you back out that $291,000, then you really didn't need it for this year. I mean, yes, in, in theory, you did, because we haven't hit the mark on all of our expenses, but it has not been transferred into this year yet either. So, like I said, the-
How many due-to forms are sitting out there, do you know?
So at this point, we don't really even know how many due-to forms are sitting out there, that have not been cleared yet.
Do we have an idea of when?
September 30th. We, we have to have it by September 30th, otherwise the auditor's going to say, sorry, you missed your mark, it's not going to move over.
Okay, so backing out of 200, do you know? Backing out to 291, then we would have a budget for next year, but then we can always add those, roll those monies over into it next year?
Well, no, the 291,000 was supposed to come out of last year's fund balance into this year. So the difference in your revenue, a portion of that revenue, is 291,000 that hasn't been rolled over. So talking about just this fiscal year, at the 271,000, that's, that's where we look, go back to those main budgets and say, let's take out the software, let's take out the additional people, let's take out where we know we increased, back to last year's numbers, but all the other numbers can stay the same until we hit the, until we hit zero. That way, you don't have to worry about fund balance until after we have a better idea of what that fund balance is, and then come back, maybe first quarter of next year, and say, let's make our first amendment to roll fund balance back into this budget, to add in all the other capital improvements.
Okay, that, I guess, that's what I was trying to say, we take it out right now, and then next year, we can make an adjustment and-
And could add in.
Add a mechanic again. And if we adopt, we had this, this year's old budget, well, this year's budget, the 18, 19 budget, we adopt that for the 19, 20 budget, we could still make amendments to add monies into it.
Yeah. I mean, but you all have done a lot of work in the last three weeks, and so really, you're just looking at where do we find, where do we cut back, 271,000 here, and whatever the difference is in the water, and those line items, you know, are pretty, those are pretty, those are, those are pretty distinct line items.
Right, so those line items, we'd have to rework all over again?
No, I think you just go, we just go to the main one. So, that's why I said, so right off the bat, if you go to, if you go to page nine-
What's the title of it?
Non-departmental expenses. If, if you go to page nine, you just zero out the 70,000 at the bottom.
And the problem is, we have zero in the roads, zero. Here we go to the streets budget, which is somewhere further back here. This budget that we're talking about right now is $869,000, which is a quarter million dollar reduction from where we were before, and it has no money allocated to improve streets. So it is a, yeah, that's page 20. It's a significant increase in the budget with zero dollars per capital improvement plan. And I can just tell you, my constituents would not support this budget at all with that.
So-
So we have lots of work to go through, including balancing out capital budget, that's why I went back to, when we have fund balance, we have three things to do. One, what's the fund balance, setting aside reserve, understand how we balance this current budget, how we consider capital improvement plans. I think we're still short on a few things, like IT plans and others. How we take care of budget amendments, we enable all that down, before my view, we can actually have a budget for fiscal year 19 tomorrow. That's why I go back to make it simple, because we could spend another week here, we can eventually get there, but we got a lot of work to do.
And, and remember, the streets has three additional personnel, so that's a lot of that difference in costs right at the top. So if we, as council say, let's hold off on, on adding additional staffing, then we back that out. Originally, I did have an item in there, and I think it was kind of, let's take it out until we know how much fund balance we have.
Well, we have-
So the only other one that would need to, to be looked at really is parks, I think that's the next one that had a significant increase in its expenses. So the street department and parks department, you had additional staffing, that if we back out, you're going to get close to that negative 271. And then again, when you get to your fund balance in the first fiscal year, you could say, okay, let's put some money back into streets. Because by then, your preliminary plan will be done on your streets, and you should be almost done with your needs assessment on your wastewater plant, and so then you start looking at those capital improvement plans to say, okay, what can we fund this fiscal year, and what needs to be rolled over into next year, or what are the alternative funding options for those, for, for those items that have to be covered? And again, water and wastewater, that's a whole different fund, just the general fund is, you know, is the negative 271.
Right, and, and, so I understand all that. I'm looking at building services, our budget this year was two and a half heads, we have three now, and part time is forecast, so we didn't make our budget building services, I would contend, we mainly needed a head and a half. Part of this, you know, we've increased, we've gone up some 35 people over the last year and a half, you said. I can't, I'm not going to argue the merits of whether we need it or not, certainly there are additional things that we need. I said, I'm not going to argue the additional merits about how many people we need, but we're up from 65 when Jessica started up to now 90 people full-time. And I think this is all part of the question we ask ourselves, we don't have enough money to meet all of our needs, given all of the people and all that we have to go do. So I, I do think, going back to last year's budget gives us a baseline, it's much easier, and then we really are going to have to spend some time allowing the finance department to do their work, so we understand what the fund balance is, and then take a hard look. We have rushed our table through this, spending, all of us, four to five hours a night, going back on the 16th, the 23rd, the 30th, and actually, we didn't do it on the 16th, so the 23rd, the 24th, the 30th, we've gone on nights. I just think we're doing ourselves a disservice in rushing a budget together that we got off late for lots of reasons. I, I think we're ill-advised, as I said. My view is, I can't support this budget as written, I can't support the budget from last year.
Are you willing to pull some of that?
I can't put that into emotion here, because-
So I just want to point out, before you make that motion-
I will.
That there were significant errors in last year's budget, and, and allocations, and so again, we, you know, you're, you're progressing, you're trying to make progress, and you're trying to make this better every year. Some of those changes that should have been done early on in the fiscal year weren't made, follow-up paperwork wasn't done, and there wasn't a monthly process to keep up with the changes that council was making. So I think, so while you, well, Mr. Stevens feels you're doing yourself a disservice by trying to move forward at this point, I feel you're doing a disservice because you did put in several hours of work into what is proposed, and I think you can hit a balanced budget without scrapping the whole thing and not including fund balance, and still being able to come back and amend it to include those other items later on.
I cannot approve a budget, that is a reduction in streets, very soon. And that is an additional $350,000 we'd have to put in the street budget, and I've got strong feedback from my constituents on that across the board.
Can we compromise and find other line items?
Well, we're 55 minutes from a full city council meeting, of which we're supposed to present a preliminary budget, and my view, we're going to have to go line by line, or some big chunks. We're not talking tens of thousands of dollars, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of chunk out. Your, your proposal is to basically go back to the 4.9 million dollar budget last year, and just start there? I, I, my proposal- My proposal is take the budget that we had last year that we approved for the 2018, 19 budget and use that as the basis for the starting period for fiscal year 19 and 20. That does a number of things. It provides the opportunity for the finance department to get caught up on doing the accounting of the roughly five and a half million, two forms and all that stuff. It allows us to come up with therefore a proper fund balance. So we, council, know what money's dumped over in each of the major buckets. It allows us to walk through and do any fine tuning that we would like to do on the proposed budget that we've spent all the time going through. We can use that as a starting point as we look and say, aha. Okay, then based upon that, we can allocate money to reserve. We can make sure we got the right capital improvement plan put in place. Then we can go back and do a, an amendment to the budget in the October, November timeframe with full participation from the residents. Uh, as the opportunity for their input. It allows us as individual city council members who do not talk to the constituents to go talk to them. I've gotten feedback from my constituents, but it allows us the opportunity to go further and refine that. It also allows us to go look at the draft capital plan that's on the table, look and say, ah, we got some work to go do there. Because we have to face some very difficult challenges. One, we have greater needs in this city, particularly underground, water and wastewater than we have money for. And we're going to have to ask ourselves, do we pay as we go or do we pay and go on debt? Okay, I'm in favor of a pay as you go, not creating more debt. Because that's the overwhelming feedback I get when I talk to people about, are you going to take on a little bit more debt? They say, hell no, the school budget's already killing me from a personal property standpoint, so I don't want to put that debt in. The debt we're talking here is greater than they got from the new high school right now. So you think about the devices that created this community overall school and think about if us were to come in and says, oh, by the way, we're going to add on another 30 cents. People would say, not on your life, because they can't afford it. So these are the discussions I think we as council need to have with our constituents and from a work early through. I just am worried and I think it's going to draw us to some real hard decisions that we have to make about where we allocate our monies. And in my opinion, we're all not going to get what we want in that process, but we're going to have priorities set. But to me, that's a really important discussion and we're rushing through it at this point. So that's why I make the proposals as I did. Yeah, I know, I know. And that's why we all do our homework part of the council meetings. That's why my frustration early on with updates. I build spreadsheets through cross-analyses, look at numbers, see what the opportunities are, and it's just hard giving us hard work. So if, I'm happy to make that proposal in the full council meeting. And go through the discussion, we get our dialogue and our rationale perspective and take a vote accordingly, but we can't do that here. We have to do that in council. Okay, so given that, uh, Mayor, I know we're not formal resolutions and all that. We've got 45 minute break to make our body breaks before we start the full council meeting. So we want to go ahead and, uh, go into recess at this point. Is that going to be a good time?
God, over the ages and a father tonight, you have always been faithful to your people. In your mercy, please come to us now. Give comfort and courage to our neighbors who are suffering in mourning in El Paso, Texas and in Des Moines, Ohio. Give confidence and skill to those who are bored and hardworking, to rescue, to save and to heal. In these moments of continuing shock and sorrow, give us your peace that has since all our history. Open our eyes, our hearts and our hands to help where we can, to comfort and support the many people whose lives have so drastically changed. Oh God, we confess that we have been inconsistent in our faithfulness and in our obedience to you. Please forgive our misguided pride and our foolish arrogance. Grant us the intelligence, the willingness and the wisdom to recognize and then address the challenges and the decisions that are before us. Help us to prepare our hearts and our minds by spending more time in our prayer closets than we do on our cell phones. Help us to withhold judgment until we have heard all the facts and really listened to the ideas and opinions of other people. When we think of ourselves as courageous, please remind us to be gracious with our words and with our actions. When we feel very strongly about something, please remind us to think and to speak clearly and patiently. Always help us to remember that our best citizens and our best civic leaders are also humble, faithful and obedient servants. So please deliver us from temptation, feeling lowly and hurtful, or expecting recognition and praise at every turn. Help us to create a positive vision for what we can become, tempered by common sense and willingness to work to make change. Give us a blessed hope for the future of our community, our county, our state or our country. That begins with the steps we begin here tonight. We pray all these things in the name each of us holds most dear, which for me is the name Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Mayor, we do have a forum. The notice was posted at 2 PM on August 29th.
Thank you. We do have today's presentations and our security commissions. We'll start off with a birthday, those long-sighted ladies of David Martinez, John Rivera, Kirk Kaufman, Alex McAven, Erin, uh, Yenwela, Bella Portman, Elizabeth Anderson and Jenny Marcus. So let's wish them a happy birthday. Do we have anybody from the street department here? No, we don't. Anyway, I want to go ahead and I want to recognize the person in the street department. It had the 1947, 41, I'm sorry, 41 fire truck. And it parked up in the street department, aged and rusty and whatnot. And these folks, we had Inklum West in the city run. They started working on it, sat in it down, getting up and running. Uh, they did a fantastic job. It was the Fourth of July parade. I got to ride it and rode it like a champ. And a lot of people complimented them on that, on the fun job they did. So again, I'd like to thank all the hard work they put into it. Then we have Chris Al Gonzalez. Certificate of appreciation, Chris Al Gonzalez, fire department. In grateful appreciation to Chris Al Gonzalez, over 20 years of service in City of Alpine, Fire Department. Signed on this day, on this sixth of August, 2019, Chris Al Gonzalez, Alpine City Mayor. And there's one more, certificate of appreciation, Johnny Delon. Certificate of appreciation, Johnny Delon Airport Department. In grateful appreciation to Johnny Delon, for his 25 years of service to the City of Alpine Airport Department. Signed on this sixth day of August, 19, Chris Al Gonzalez, Alpine City Mayor. Congratulations. I'm going to throw back a little bit on the fire truck. There was an article written in the Alpine Atlanta, and it was donated to the, to the city. So y'all have a chance, I'll leave it up here where y'all can see it.
Good work. I had none, city manager.
Mayor, yes, I have an update on staffing as well as an update on the street commission and needs assessment for water and wastewater. Um, what you just received is the most up-to-date list of the employees. Um, you'll see that there have been some changes and there will be some reassignments coming up. I want to introduce Brooke Upchurch, can she come around? Um, she will be joining us as the HR coordinator. Thank you, Brooke. Um, Lorena Crespo Gonzalez is actually in two sections, but as of October, will be transitioning back into a full-time court clerk. Um, and so that part-time position for the records clerk will be, um, will be vacant. So we've been posting for that. Uh, we did interview for the communications administrative assistant. Um, we did find someone, but they accepted a position with the school district teaching. So we're back on the hunt for that position. Next, we've got the building services position of the building official that's open. Um, also within there, Ismael Hernandez will also be returning to the PD in August, um, about mid-month. And we've already hired his replacement, which is Tony Catani, who actually started yesterday. Fire department positions are still open. Um, we did have a meeting with the county judge and his liaison regarding the fire department. And that position will be reposted. Um, those that have applied in the past that are still interested will not have to reapply again. But we just want to make sure that we send it out again for the publication. Um, as you're, as you're aware, Chief Scound is resigning, retiring, as he put it, actually retiring, at effective the end of the month. He has requested to take some additional time off before his last day. And so Daryl Lozoya will be taking over as interim chief of police on the day-to-day until the search for the chief of police is conducted. The vacant position in the police department is the one that Ismael Hernandez will be filling. And the dispatch office is full, as, as are the two high dev investigator positions. The position for analyst has already been selected and we are still awaiting the background check from the law enforcement agencies on that. We did receive a letter of resignation from one of our animal control officers and that position will be posted this coming week. It'll be next week because we just did one last year. Um, and then that vacant position under kennel help is not going to be filled. Um, Deborah Alvarado, the other kennel help, has absorbed the hours under that part-time position. So that position should probably be eliminated from future employee list. The public works position for director, um, we are pending Mr. Heimrich's acceptance of the offer. And there is one other vacancy in the street departments. Um, he was full. However, we had some disciplinary issues with one employee and that person has left the city of Alpine, I guess about two, two weeks now. Um, in facilities, we do have a new hire to fill that vacant position.